Do it all now, great, love to, right? Let's show you New Windsor. This would be the landing page. You can log into this software from anywhere that you have internet access. And I'll just jump right into one. I'll say meter insight here and spinning wheel. This gives you a snapshot of your system. So they have 5,269 active meters that are reading. They have 99 with no read. They have 17 that haven't reported in in 72 hours. Right, you got a little definition down on the bottom. You can just click the I and it tells you what that bucket means. They have one that hasn't reported in in 48 hours. They have 73 that are not tied to accounts. So it gives you an idea of what's going on, just a glimpse.
This is a, which one?
This is fixed base. This is fixed base.
No, 3.9 was 2.9.
No, 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 no. You'd be surprised.
Yeah, no idea.
It's not cheap, okay? Not cheap, but. These are all the alarms they have on their system. They have 133 meters that are sending alarm.
This was before you.
No, this is currently. This is why. This is their system as of right now.
Yeah, that's where it's at.
Right. So they have five meters that have reverse flow alarms. They have 14 meters that have empty pipe alarms that have been taken out of service. Thirty, so, so the blue number, the big blue number, that's how many alarms they've received from that, that definition? And then the green number is how many are reporting the alarms. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Uh, so they have 37 meters that have bad wiring that are sending a meter communication failure. And they receive nearly 700 alarms on that. Probably fix those. They have three that are swapped accounts. The, the meter ID or the radio ID have swapped numbers in their billing software. So what it's doing is it's saying, hey, billing says meter ID one is associated with this account, or with this radio in this address, right? Yet we have meter ID number two at this location.
How would that, how would that?
It's basing it off the data that's in what we call the RNI, the servers, what's reporting into it, and comparing it to what's entered into billing. So they mixed, they mixed some information up within, within billing. You can say, okay, I've got all these empty pipes. Where, where are they? So... I don't know how to use the mouse. This is a bad neighborhood.
Let's see. They will bill once a month, right? So we could really bill once a month.
So you can drop and see, street view, so you can see what kind of environment it is, right? These images are only as good as Google, you know, how often Google updates them, right? But, um, but it's there and it, and it is useful. I've dropped, I've had like a series of alarms in one area. You drop the little guy down and, and look at the environment and it's a rundown scary looking neighborhood. And you're like, eh, makes sense, right? Have these tamper alarms and reverse flow and empty pipe alarms. My computer's gonna die here. You can drill down, you can search here. Let's do a search before this thing dies on me. You can expand the date range. So if a customer calls in and says, hey, my bill ranges from this date to this date, you can enter that period in and then you can type in their address. You can search based on account number, device ID. Auto populates. You can jump right into their account and you can see the device ID numbers associated with it, the street name, right, the, um, the person who owns that property, the, the reading. So this is the reading as of today at 7:00 PM. So you can view it in a table, you can view it in a graph, you can see it hourly, you can see it monthly. Yeah, they have something going on. You see all, you see how it's pretty much blue all the way across? It barely goes to zero. They have a, probably a sticking toilet flap out.
No.
No, no.
It's a little bit faulty.
Yeah, that's.
Their heads would just explode.
They'd be so mad.
They'd come in saying.
I would say you're all day.
When you did the ones in New Windsor, were they, did you do them all at once?
So it took us two years to do the deployment, but yeah, they, they just basically wrote us an order and noticed to proceed. Hired Vepo to do the installs, had a kickoff meeting, did a pilot. We installed, I think maybe 20 throughout the area to just see how they want to view the data in their system. Make sure that they're pleased with the information that they're getting in. Make sure they're pleased with, um, Vepo's approach and pictures and things like that. And then they said, yep, we're happy, this is what we want. And then we said, green flag, schedule appointments. And they did it, they did it by book or group.
There's a fortune.
No.
I think it was.
So we could start that as a pilot. That could be a pilot. High growth as a pilot.
So if you do it baby steps and you do a handheld reader and start installing them yourself, once you get this up, you can simply install an antenna and, I say simply, but I'll have to do some studies. But you, where that antenna would go. Install the antenna, we log in and we tell it to send a signal to all your existing meters and radios to talk to the antenna and it puts them into a fixed base mode and they just start reporting in. This is what Westchester is now doing.
I'd say high growth would be the best.
And they already have the pro.
Have the pro, well, all the ones that they're installing are pro.
They're all pro.
But they're all scattered.
Westchester joint has 14,000 endpoints, 14,000 services. But as of right now, they only have 6,000 on their system. So they've, they started going down this path a few years ago. They got about halfway. We had a meeting, we said, hey, you know, how do you want to proceed? You know, this is what we can do in terms of pricing. You have about half the system installed. This is how many antennas you would need. And they said, let's do it. And so I gave them bulk purchasing pricing on the remaining 6,000 endpoints that they need to cut their cost down. They're receiving those shipments over the course of two years. But we've already installed the infrastructure as of just this summer. Installed the infrastructure with my crew and got half their system reading on this. The other half they're reading with drive-by. It's, I mean, it's, yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's gonna be a headache until everything's ready properly.
What happens is you never actually do a changeout and it becomes this perpetual thing where you're constantly buying 100 meters and radios at a time and it never ends. You, by the time you get them all installed, you have to change them out again. Right? The old brass body meters and mechanical meters, I've seen them 60, 70, 80 years old still in people's basement. They're not accurate. They're, you lose money on them. You know, city, there we go. City of Saratoga Springs, that's their method. They spend $120,000 a year in their budget for meters and radios. And they're, they're on a path where it will take them 20 years to finish their changeout and they have to start all over again. Dorktown has been doing the same thing. And they're, they're fixed base and they still won't have it all changed out. Now they're, we're talking to them about ripping the Band-Aid off and, and finishing it. If you go fixed base, you have, you mentioned pricing. Figure $50,000 for an antenna installed. Granted, I'd have to do a site inspection and all that, get quotes for installation. And then annual fees. Without the customer portal, you're looking at 69 cents per meter for service for your annual fees. Software setup would be 60, 70,000. So upfront setup costs are expensive. The antenna and installation really isn't that bad when you compare it to just a full blown drive-by system. You're still looking at $30,000 for a drive-by transceiver.
Per year, or 15,000 dollars for one of our villages for that access.
If we wanted to get 72, is it, or 62?
Sixty-nine cents per meter per month.
But if we wanted to do like one, one development as a pilot.
So one of the methods we talked about last meeting was starting here with the handheld and the meters and radios, getting them installed. And then what, what you can do is you can put up what we call an R100 collector, which are about $7,000 apiece and you can install them in-house. And then you can deploy those as needed without doing like a propagation study. The full-blown M400 collector is what I told you was like $40,000 by itself, right? And then say another 10 to 15,000 dollars to install depending on the situation, right? R100 is fairly inexpensive. For $7,000, you can put one up on your, you know, on town hall. You can put one up on a water tank and you can see how much information you're collecting. And then just start filling, filling the holes. And you might need a couple of them. Two, three? I have one, depends on how high it is. I have one in Fishkill, an R100 that reads two and a half miles. It's on an 80-foot structure though. And then you have to pay someone to come and install something on that.
We have what, two towers?
Two towers and a server.
So, lot to think about. Come cross-eyed yet?
Not yet, in a couple minutes.
What are, what are you, what are you thinking is best for Washingtonville? And we went over a lot of different possibilities, a lot of different numbers. And I didn't mean the money, the waters. It just seems like there's a lot of interest in all different areas. And I want to make sure that you have the information to make.
I think one of the biggest problems is people don't believe they use that water.
Yep.
Whether it's a misread, and it could be, it could be for the dials on the outside. Other than that, you know, if, if we could install something that's relatively, it's a block, building block to get, you know, a development of 62, 72 homes, which a lot of the problems come out of.
Yep.
Okay. And I, I think that's where it can start, it can start with the multifamily homes. Where's it, not Brookside, Weatherbain. Schools.
Your, your biggest investment is the meters and radios. No matter which reading method you go, that's your biggest investment. Your meters and radios and how you're gonna get them installed. It always is. So if you start there, whatever investment you make in your equipment and your reading side, software side, you continue to utilize no matter which method you choose in the end, right? You don't abandon it.
Right. It's a lot to think about, you know, how we approach it.
So.
I think we're all in agreement that something needs to be done.
Oh, absolutely. I'm just, I'm a little confused on what's the best way to.
And where do we start?
I would, I, my, my recommendation is.
I like drive-bys?
Well, my drive-by is handheld.
Yeah.
That's excellent, it's great, more tracking.
So that's the 494,000 package too?
Yes.
Now my, my, I'm fine with that. My problem, I, I don't understand, it's like who's gonna install them? So if he does it, it's 360, 360,000, but then you said you can't do it.
Until they come.
Yeah, so that's not another year.
So if you're gonna, yeah, I mean, we would prioritize the order and, but right now they, they're talking.
But then what's our ultimate, what's our other option? Finding a contractor that would?
Yeah.
I'm trying to find a contractor to do any of that.
You have, you have anybody local that you guys trust?
That's, you want one company's gonna do it all?
Yeah. So I, I mean, I've worked with a lot of different cities.
Those guys come in and they do it from the living.
Who?
Yeah. Uh, these Vepo guys, they do it from the living. That's what they do and they're good at.
So we're looking at 700, 800,000 dollars total damage.
So, but it's, it's your investments in the water. You're lucky to have really good wells, you know? We're rebuilding one of them right now. People around you don't have as good of water as you.
You know, and losing money.
Well, at, at one point, you know, like, i- if we went to contract it, you know, through you and all the meters have to be here, all right? But we know that all the meters can't be here at once, right?
Yeah.
So we are there.
They're, I can ask them to.
Like 300 meters at a time?
I can ask them for a commitment on a per-month number or a per-quarter basis.
That's gonna be based on you, not us.
Right, yeah, I would go to the manufacturer and say, can you commit to X number of meters and radios per month or per quarter? They're probably not going to give me a number, the way things are. And one of the nice things about the equipment side of things is if you go with the equipment, you can still, you can continue to read and you can start that process of, of being more efficient with it, right? And then wait for the remainder meters and radios to come in, right? And then call in to Vepo to do the installs or whomever it might be. But it, that's, that's gonna help you reduce human error and things like that and you'd be more efficient. And you were saying before that if you can speed up that process, it would be beneficial to the, the village as well, right? Unfortunately, we are in a situation where product being timed are horrendous.
Right.
But once we start thinking about it and get a decision made, that's where, hopefully by two years we're caught up and, and done. And you're good for 18, 20 years. Hopefully not a year.
You can always.
No, I, I will. No, I, I'm good.
Would it, would it be, would it be helpful to put out a request for proposal on the install side of things to, in, in, write in there that, you know, installations aren't gonna take, or not gonna be, you know, all at once, that they may take a period of time to deploy the system?
And do they only do it certain times in a year?
So that when you receive 200 meters and radios, you can call them up and say, I have 200 meters and radios, I'm ready for you to come install them. And then they come in and they do that installation process.
So when they do the installation, is it just one installation, like one group for, like, let's say five or six meters a day? Or is it a, a group of people that come in and they go, you know, six homes at a time?
So if it was for me, I would have a team.
And like, what does that, what, give me a number, like how many, how many hours would you do in a day?
It depends on how many people respond.
Let's just say schedule. I mean, would you try to schedule for that?
At least, uh, one person will do 10 installs a day. One installer will do 10 installs a day. That's what, that's what their goal is.
So it's longer than a seven-hour day?
That's an eight, I think they consider an eight-hour day. But they end up working 10 hours plus. Yeah.
No, I know.
It all, it all depends on how your residents respond. You know, if, if you get trickles of people calling in, scheduling appointments, they're only gonna have one guy and they're gonna try to schedule them as tightly as possible so that they can be efficient. What I saw in New Windsor when COVID had, you know, gave us shutdowns and things like that, we would get people that would schedule one or two within one day. And then there are people trying to schedule them on Wednesday and some people trying to schedule Friday. And Vepo's trying to condense that all into one, one day. And it just, it's not efficient for anybody and then, not that you care about. We're all losing money and you're not happy.
People who are cheating the system now certainly don't want this.
Oh, that's fine.
Yeah, what do you do about that?
You, my recommendation anyway would be to have something in place, bylaws in place that state if you don't change out your meter, you're gonna receive, receive a surcharge, right, on your bill. Whether it's three times your minimum or three times your average.
I can see that going well.
And so that's why, that's actually, unfortunately, that's why New Windsor took as long as it did because they said they were going to do this upfront. COVID hit, we had issues, we got back in, you know, back in town to schedule appointments. People were giving them all sorts of garbage. They refused to put out the letter stating that they were gonna receive surcharges. You know, and, and then they kept looking at us and they're saying, how come you guys aren't installing more meters? And like, I can't make folks call in and schedule an appointment. I need your support to do that. You need to take some time.
So we have to do, you know, what we have to do is look at our, our local codes, I guess.
Yeah. Yeah.
Uncover that rock.
Nothing but her.
Unfortunately, these are the things that come along with doing a full-blown changeout project.
Interesting question. I think the RFP with the schedule every so often is a good idea.
Yeah. So I think it's worth a try and you can always state that you reserve the right to throw out any proposal for any reason. And if they come back and, you know, you get plumbers that you may not trust or, you know, no one that's willing to actually commit, maybe they put in a bunch of exceptions when they hand their proposal in, right? And you say, all right, this, this isn't gonna fly. We either need to wait for everything and run it through Corham Maine or we do it in-house.
I'm more concerned with not being able to change the meter out because of, you know, valves that, you know, are not functional. And then we go outside and we'll be there.
Yeah.
Because I really hate to turn off the outside.
Curve valve outside.
Curve valve, cause that might not work either. And now we got a big problem.
They have pipe freeze kits.
So, and I was gonna bring that up. The team I work with usually has a freeze kit on hand.
They'll change valves out too.
So, and they, and they do, they do that as well, right? It costs you, it's in there as an option, you know, that if they have to change a valve or if you want them to change the valve, that there's a fee associated with just, with just that. And we break that out in our invoice. But yeah, they end up freezing the line. Sometimes they might, you know, on a rare occasion, depending on plumbing, they might refuse to do the install and say, hey, these folks need to get a plumber. You know, they have galvanized pipe that's running away, bad lead service line. Whatever, whatever it might be. And on that note, do you guys have lead service lines, a lot of them?
Uh, not lead, it was asbestos, I'd say.
Really?
Old, old fool's place.
I was gonna say, during the course of the installment through Corham Maine, we can have them do a survey. Cause I know one of the big things is lead and copper surveys on, on your service line. So we can have that as a requirement in there so they go through, they do that inspection and we have that for.
This year, they're actually gonna require us to do a full audit at every house.
Yeah, okay, so you don't have to do what he's doing there.
Every house. And I, I directed at Department of Health and said, how do you, how can we do that? How can you make us do that? Every house inspection.
It's New York, it's, they've just come up with.
I told Department of Health, it's, well, good luck foresting.
Is this county-wide or state-wide?
It's a state thing, yeah.
Every house is a detailed.
There's a lot of money out there for it. There's a lot of grant money, it's crazy, funding for it.
Yeah. And correct me if I'm wrong, but once they're, you find out, has to be replaced, has to be replaced.
Yes, yeah, so you don't really wanna know, but you're gonna force you to know.
It's on the village to replace it.
And again, there is money for that too, to do that replacement. Newburgh's got a, Newburgh's been very successful with that. If you have questions and, and you know Wayne, call, call Wayne.
Wayne?
In the town or the city?
Brandonburg. He's the, he's the water superintendent in the city.
I think they just got something.
They, another one, yeah. Yeah, they've been chasing this for a couple of years.
But they have like phone in that work too.
Uh, that's fire suppression phone. They have a lot of issues with PFOA and PLOS. They ended up putting in a new plant. That was like Wayne's first week on the job and DEC rolled up and black SUVs and he's like, I'm gonna take this job.
We got a lot of, um, a lot of things to look at. I mean, I think we need to, we pulled the trigger on, on the wastewater plant that was just being taken out for years and years. We gotta pull the trigger on this. Does the I-Pro, I-Pro come in bigger sizes still?
So it's one inch down through 5/8 straight. So 5/8, 5/8 by 3/4.
The big ones, they have turbo meters, turbo meters, they hook up together. Yeah, it's like the school and like the tap, the, yeah.
Winery.
So, so yeah, that would be the Omni line. That would be the Omni, Omni line meters.
Actually, a meter like that.
Yeah. They are talking about making those in, up to two inch. They are talking about inch and a half and two inch.
Three inch, oh, three inch actually. And two inch.
The Weatherbain condos are, are, are big.
They're two. Two inch, yeah.
We just did one of those.
Car wash.
Yeah, there's a couple, a couple inches, two, three inches out there. So Weatherbain, we couldn't use these right now?
The one we just put in was two inch. So yeah, I guess not right now.
Is it blue?
Um, I believe it was a Badger meter actually. So it was brass. Yeah, sorry.
Yeah, you asked them. So we would have to change it out or they would have to change it out.
Some of them you might be able to retrofit it, but I mean, if the meter is that old, you should probably change it. So you're accurately capturing.
And that's really, I think, one of the, the areas that we need to look at with it.
Yeah.
Brookside across the street.
You need to put up, we talked about a meter pit.
Yeah, the meter pit.
Where the main goes into the whole park there. Wondering that. Cause they have breaks every week from there. We're out there underneath the trailers.
Well, that's on Washingtonville, man. You'll have to go this week.
Yes.
They crack people on install.
Yeah, one Friday. And I know that homes should have backfall compromises also.
They have sprinklers and something like that.
Not just regular domestic coming in? You don't need it?
Some do.
Some do, but you don't, unnecessary. You have sprinklers, it's something that you're supposed to, cause the ground will go to water, water will go back. So, yeah, a lot to think about. Just let me know if you guys wanna meet again? Talk about different things?
Eh, well, as we move forward, we're going to have a public hearing. So we'll invite you back.
Walk the line.
Yeah. It still might be the same group that you have here.
I, so, so I've been to.
You can get a dozen donuts and call it a day.
Fishkill was a nightmare.
You'd say donuts?
They showed up at Tin Foil Hacks.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was, that was a rough one. Middletown, they showed up and they were so happy.
I did one of the questions, but I'm guessing one of the questions would be, why do we have to do this?
So that you can reduce your non-revenue water or you?
Yeah, but they might not be, you know, if I'm only paying a hundred dollars a quarter, I don't care how much water you lose, I'm only paying a hundred dollars a quarter.
Until we're almost out of water and then they want to figure out why we can start. Until we're almost out of water and then they want to figure out why we just died. Okay, we have this great.
I think we just have to come up with the dumbest questions that there are. I'm working there.
We have seen a large increase in customer complaints of high water wells since we put new I-pro in. And usually, how many bucketettes have we got, like say, full cantiberry?
Down a couple. Yorkshire, I've done like nine.
Because of these.
Yes. Cause they have roll floor ratings. People aren't used to that.
If, if you're continuing to build out an existing system that you have, does it really need to go to a public meeting?
Yeah, this thing I love about.
And you're scheduling out, you're scheduling out your deliveries? I mean, I don't, I don't really know, so that's.
Yeah, good question.
Cause I've had folks do it many different ways, you know, I've had places say, no, this is what we're standardized on. Um, this is the method that we've been, or the course of action that we've been taking all these years. We're just gonna continue it, but we're going to speed it up essentially.
When no one came to the, to read, you know, the structure.
Oh, yeah, no one.
Yeah, but I think that's different than just upgrading a, a meter.
True, yeah. I mean, it's a question, no? It's a question that you have to ask.
I don't think we need one.
It's like if we upgrade, uh, you know, a dump truck for these guys, we wouldn't have to have a public meeting.
It's true.
Okay. I agree. Yeah, we upgraded well.
Yep.
Who's cooking? I think my son's making waffles, so that's what I'm.
I don't have to go home to scream at kids. I'm not getting kids. I'm not gonna wake up to screaming kids.
I don't have a no.
Any questions?
New ones.
Water chip switches.
Thank you.
So I, I really hope that this was informative and I didn't confuse everybody.
I think I got, I think I got it this time. The first time was a lot, a lot of confusion.
A lot.
This was so.
I've been doing this for seven years, so I forget how, um, how foreign it is to some people, right?
I'm sure there's gonna be questions throughout from now on.
Yeah, yeah. And you have my information. You can call, text, email, anything. I'm always working.
Now I get why you gave us the list of cars.
You will have questions. I have, I have folks that text me on the weekends.
Yes, if we can make a motion to adjourn the meeting, go into executive session.
That's your. And it, and it, we're, you know, we're friends at this.
All those. Good night, everyone. Good night. We're gonna go into executive session.